Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, June 25th, 2019. If you'd all stand if you're able and join with me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for the "if you can stand."
All right, I try to be thoughtful. Rich? All right, next on the agenda is roll call. Please let me know if you're here. Holly Bem?
Here.
David Bloomey?
Here.
Erin Levitt Smith?
Here.
Craig McCormack?
Here.
Alan Needham is excused, absent but excused. William Rice, here. Elizabeth Burt, absent. Richard Cortez?
Present.
And Gary Lungarini, absent. One, two, three, four, five. We have five regular commissioners. Gives us the opportunity to promote an alternate member to regular status for this meeting. Rich, I'd ask that you do that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. We can conduct business. Okay, next, approval of the minutes of the June 11th, 2019, regular meeting. Our secretary's not here today, so I'm going to ask Erin to lead us through the minutes.
Any changes on page one?
Erin, after line 58, after the last part of Jim's, Jeff, she's testimony, was he also mentioned that there were a number of unknowns, including groundwater velocity and direction.
And that didn't get put in. Is it anywhere else, Holly?
No.
No. So what, you'd like to add specifically what?
Well, as he finished in his closing, he also mentioned that there were still a number of unknowns regarding the property groundwater, including velocity and direction. Remember, he did talk about that. I think that's important.
If I recall, I think his final statement was that something to the effect that those unknowns do not affect his conclusions on the suitability of the design.
Well, I think it talked to, he was, at earlier testimony, mentioned he was still concerned about overrun. And I thought that was what he was referring to when he said that there were those unknowns. I just thought it belonged in the record.
Okay, so maybe, can we ask town staff to review the record, you know, the recorded record and see if there's something there of substance?
We'll do that and report back to the commissioner next meeting.
Okay.
You want to table action on these?
Yep.
Should we go through to see what else is?
Sure.
Anything else on page two? What about page three?
Line 139, instead of the word "by," should be substitute "to," built to design, as opposed to by design.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Four.
I mean, four, thank you. All right.
Do you defer a motion?
Well, I was going to say, I was going to propose that we defer voting on these minutes until after the town staff can review Mr. Shea's testimony.
Yeah, he's table.
Table. Did I say table or did I not?
Defer.
Sorry, table.
Do we need a motion?
That was my motion. Maybe I didn't state that clearly.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, thank you. Thank you for.
Minutes. Second.
Sorry, I beat you to it.
Oh, you did? Okay, you got it. Let the record show that Rich Cortez seconded that motion. All in favor of the motion, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously to table the minutes until the next meeting, which is July 9th. Very good. Thank you, Erin.
You're welcome.
Okay. So we have no public hearings that are open, so we'll move on to old business. Under old business, we have an application. In accordance with HHD-CV-17-6077-573-S, Palmer Royce et al. versus Town of Simsbury Planning Commission. Order dated 12/7/2018. Application number 1602 of Mansour Prime Properties LLC agent, Royce Palmer owner, for a 19-lot affordable housing subdivision under CGS 8-30G on the property located at AD Climax Road. Assessors map D-20 Block 608, Lot 001, Zone R40. And let's keep in mind that we must render a decision by August 15th.
It's actually tonight.
Yeah, I was going to say.
That's an error in the agenda.
Yeah, okay. By tonight? I think it could have been tomorrow, but whatever.
It's tomorrow.
Yeah, we had 15 days from our last meeting.
Yeah, sorry, tomorrow.
Okay, so we have to, we have to render a decision tonight on that. In our last meeting, we had some serious debate on this application. There were two instructions that I gave out. One was to town staff to prepare a motion in the affirmative. And the other was a request to the commissioners that if you had any, any statement, comments that you wanted to make, that you should submit them to Mike Liddon by June 21st, which was last Friday. And we have, Holly was kind enough to put her thoughts on paper. I thought she did a really nice job. And I think, think of what I'd like to do is get a motion on the table for a decision and then have deliberations, hopefully after the motion is seconded. Okay?
You mean, support a decision, yea or nay, first and then discuss it?
No. Make the motion, discuss and then vote.
Okay.
Right? Yes.
But make the motion affirmative or negative first.
So I'm going to make a motion to grant an approval of the subdivision application by Mansour Prime Properties LLC for a 19-single-family residential lots and associated infrastructure with the following conditions, based on plans titled and dated, quote, "Subdivision Plans for Hendrick Cottages 8-30G, Affordable Housing Plan AD Climax Road, Simsbury, Connecticut, prepared by Kratzert Jones and Associates, Revision Date 4/10/2019." This decision has been made in accordance with Section 8-30G of the Connecticut General Statutes, which requires the commission to establish, based on evidence in the record, that the decision and reasons cited for the decision are supported by sufficient evidence in the record. In accordance with HHD-CV-17-6077-573-S, memorandum of decision dated November 15th, 2018. The commission makes the following findings regarding matters remanded by the court. The applicant has provided valid and sufficient soil testing in the area of the proposed basins. The applicant has updated the infiltration data associated with the stormwater basin's design in order to accurately model the length of time required for each pond and dry well to drain dry. The design of the basin, or ponds, basin slash pond, has been modified so that safety hazards in regards of drowning and potential of insect breeding are no longer, are no longer issues with the development. In granting the approval of this subdivision, the commission places the following conditions on the application. The applicant shall place a clearly visible note on the plan, quote, "These units were approved under the provisions of Connecticut General Statutes 8-30G and did not undergo the normal review, and as such, the proposed development does not meet requirements of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations," zoning regulations or subdivision regulations?
Well, I think we've discussed this, and I suggest that you end the sentence after 8-30G, that the statement that follows, I think would cause, and this is going to be put on the plan and the plan is going to be recorded, may cause issues with title searches in the future and, you know, because title searchers have to go in and verify that properties are compliant with all zoning, and that statement, I think, would cause concern and it's not needed. If you say 8-30G, it's implied from how that statute works that.
You don't need.
Review was in accordance with that section.
Well, it's not necessarily true, that an applicant could submit an application that is compliant under 8-30G. Probably not likely, but it's possible.
Yeah, but did not go, did not undergo the normal review, and as such, the proposed development does not meet the requirements of Town of Simsbury zoning regulations. That last line would be a red flag to a title searcher whose job it is to provide clean title to a purchaser. 8-30G is a supers, as you well know, a superseding state statute, which takes it outside of the normal review of zoning regulations.
Okay.
What you're trying to say is, by putting that note on the plan, this is an 8-30G subdivision. And I think that first statement adequately does that.
Probably adding the "as of date" though.
What do you mean by that, Dave?
If legislature has already modified 8-30G once, it's possible they'll modify it again, so you need to know at what date at which this was.
Good point, yeah, very good point.
You could say "as of June 24th."
Right, so I'm just saying, let's put a date.
Yeah, because you're right, every year they do a little something to it. Or "as of the date of the approval."
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, let's, we'll strike the "and did not undergo," et cetera, et cetera, and in its place, we'll put "as of the date of approval." Okay? Continuing. Item number, this is condition number two. The above language shall also be placed in any deed recorded for the units slash property. Of course, that'll be the amended text. Condition number three.
Excuse me, I think units should say lots, because what you're approving are lots, not kind of mini, pardon me.
Condition number three. Applicant is to provide deed restriction language for affordable units to Planning Commission's agent and the town attorney for review and approval. Is there a special time when, or point in the, in the process when this would be required?
Well, it would be prior to the sale of any individual lot.
The first one?
The first affordable lot, yeah.
First, prior, actually, it should be wrapped up prior to the filing of the Mylar's. Prior to the filing of the Mylar's.
Subdivision Mylar.
Subdivision Mylar's, okay.
Because usually it's a note on the subdivision Mylar.
Condition number four. An owner of a deed-restricted affordable unit shall be required to notify the Planning Commission's agent of any offer for sale. The Planning Commission's agent shall review the affordability plan and certify the maximum sale price.
So it doesn't have to come to the Planning Commission, it just has to go to an agent?
Correct.
Which would be, okay.
Town staff.
Which would be you, Michael?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Changes to location of affordable units as depicted on latest affordable housing plan require approval from the commission's agent. Said requests are to be made in writing to the town planner prior to implementation in the field. The applicant shall prepare two Mylar and two paper copies of the complete plan set for signature by chairman. One Mylar set shall be filed with Simsbury Town Clerk, and one Mylar set shall be filed with the Engineering Department. Okay. Point number seven, or condition number seven. Applicant is to provide financial surety in the form, in a form approved by the Planning Commission's agent and town council in the amount of $15,000 for erosion and sediment control.
Shall I be Board of Selectman? It's town council. Oh, town meaning, gotcha.
Meaning Bob.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Sitting right next to me.
Yeah, gotcha.
He had Bob in there in the original draft.
Bob told me it had to be formal.
Condition number eight. A pre-construction meeting with town staff is required to commencement of site work.
Prior to.
Prior to, thank you. Condition nine. Applicant is to secure developer's agreement, updated inter-town agreement, and any other construction-related approvals deemed necessary by the Water Pollution Control Authority prior to start of construction activities. Condition 10. All public, all public improvements shall be constructed and accepted in accordance with the highway construction and design standards for the Town of Simsbury. Condition 11. All conditions of approval associated with the erosion and sediment control plan referral to Conservation Commission are incorporated into this approval. Condition 12. Design engineer must supervise construction of all public improvements, including roadway and stormwater features, and provide inspection reports to the town engineer, certifying that construction activities conform to approved plans. Condition 13. Proposed development will be served by a public roadway. Construction of all public improvements shall be completed in accordance with approved plans and Town of Simsbury highway standards. The Town of Simsbury reserves right to inspect public improvements associated with this project. Condition 14. In order for Board of Selectmen to accept into the public roadway network, the following documents must be provided.
You need a comma there.
Yeah, comma.
That's in the period.
Yeah.
Done.
Change it to a comma?
Yeah, change it on the fly.
Okay, so, the following documents must be provided. A, legal documents for deeded rights for proposed roadway right-of-way and easement documents for future access and maintenance of stormwater improvements are to be reviewed and approved by the town attorney prior to transfer. Okay, so early we called.
Exactly, I think it has to be the same.
We had town.
Town council.
Town council.
And town attorney.
So the term in the charter is town attorney, so we should.
So that council.
So back in point, point seven, and we'll change it to attorney.
Okay, go.
Okay, B, under what needs to be submitted to the Board of Selectmen. A licensed surveyor shall provide certification that monumentation to establish proposed road right-of-way is completed prior to roadway acceptance. C, results such as compaction and material testing associated with the roadway construction need to be provided to the town engineer, period. D, as-built for roadway and stormwater basins, can we say as-built drawings or, yeah, as-built drawings? As-built drawings for roadway and stormwater basins slash features are required as part of the roadway acceptance process. In addition to as-built drawings, applicant is to provide certification from professional engineer that stormwater basins were constructed in accordance with approved plans and function as intended. So Dave, that addresses the concern you.
Thank you.
You discussed last time. Continuing here. Said certifications are to be provided to town staff prior to roadway acceptance. Condition 15. Issuance of certificates of occupancy requires the following development-specific information to be provided to the zoning enforcement officer. A, all property corners are to be pinned by licensed surveyor. B, certification that Kultech Systems for roof recharge systems are installed per approved plans and manufacturer's specification. Said certification is to be provided by professional engineer, period.
A professional engineer?
By a professional engineer?
Yeah.
Final as-built drawings for developed lots are to be included, are to include A2 location of Kultech system in addition to standard as-built requirements such as location of structure, utilities, grading, and other lot improvements. Is it, is it possible to kind of button this up with a comment that says, "Lack of adherence to any of these conditions could result in a stop-work order"? So failure to comply with any of these conditions may result, how about the legalese, Bob? May, could, shall, should?
I like "may."
May, may result in.
That contemplates different circumstances and.
May result in the issuance of a stop-work order.
Or other appropriate measures.
Or other appropriate.
As determined by town staff. Other, other appropriate enforcement measures as may be determined by town staff.
Adverse actions is determined by town staff, maybe.
What's that?
May result in adverse actions is determined by town staff.
Well, I like enforcement measures.
Okay.
As determined by town.
So Mike, what I have is failure to comply with any of these conditions may result in the issuance of a stop-work order or other.
Appropriate enforcement measures as determined.
Enforcement measures determined by town staff.
As determined by town staff.
Got it. Good.
That completes my motion.
Second.
You're seconded? Okay, seconded by Rich?
That's a motion.
Okay.
Seems to me that this application was given quite a bit of consideration, and seems as though the applicant's representatives presented information into the testimony that answered a lot of questions, at least for me. Certainly, feedback from some residents was important to listen to as well. But I think this motion captures kind of the sense that I got from what we had discussed last time.
I'll add to that. The court remanded three items back to us to review, to make sure that the applicant had answered those, those issues to town staff satisfaction. As far as I'm concerned, they have, according to town staff, they have no issues to deal with, left with those three items that were specifically remanded to us. So that was our charge, and I'm in favor of it for that reason.
Well, as everyone knows, from the, is that a memorandum or letter that I sent the What I did was, I went straight to the Connecticut statutes, and I actually copied, copied and pasted what our, what our instructions are by law. And so that was based upon appeal, taken under subsection F, and that was the part in bold. And all the parts in bold are from that 8-30G instruction as to what to do in the case of an appeal. And again, it, everything should come from public record, and what I did was show that is, is provide evidence from the public record. Craig, you just mentioned that the testimony of the town people should be taken into consideration, but I don't see that our motion takes that into consideration. The public evidence is quite, the public record is quite clear on this matter. There was no public support for this, there was quite a bit of opposition, and I don't see that our motion, or even our discussion, has, has broached that.
You don't think that based on testimony given by multiple neighbors that we took, because I, I think personally, I do think we heard what the neighbor said and put that into our decision. One is the sight line, one is, I mean, that was all part of our basis of looking at the evidence, so we might not have set a line in there due to neighbor so-and-so saying this, it was all folded in.
No, I meant the part where it says weighing the public need, weighing the need of public housing in. Last time we mentioned, you were in the impression that it was a de facto statement, that if the law said that you needed public housing, you needed it. And then I came up with a couple of sections from the judge's memorandum that clearly stated that we, that he folded us, actually, for not specifically considering it in our last motion, and that there are some precedents from our handy-dandy time at, spending the day at a law workshop in Middlebury, which showed that even in a town, that one could have argued that that was specifically written, that 8-30G might have been written for such a town, they were allowed to take that into consideration to weight the need for the housing that was proposed.
Where did, where did the judge shite us, as you said, in his statement?
Okay, in page, and this was the thing that really got me. I mean, this is when we were reading everything and, you know, this is several weeks when we got this. I have that on page. No, 27, I think.
85.
Maybe I wrote it wrong. Maybe I wrote it wrong. Oh, yeah, it seemed like 127, it's 27.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I apologize on that. It's right on the 1, 2, 3, 4th line, the fifth line. "The commission's decision denying the plaintiff's application did not consider or recite this question. The question being in the line before it was necessary to protect a substantial public interest that clearly outweighs the need for affordable housing."
So. Sorry, Holly, but it was necessary to protect the substantial public interest in traffic safety.
Right. Well, I mean, referring to the fact that we are allowed to consider the actual, we're allowed to weight the actual need for this.
But in.
That should have been done in the original discussion that we had. The only thing in that document that counts is the end where he tells us that we have to decide on the three items. Everything up to that is just discussion on how he came to his.
Right. But what I'm saying is, Rich, when, all I'm doing is, again, this is what the law says in the bold. The bold is 830G, cut and paste. And in the bullets, I'm referring to the, what's on the public record, and in the italics, I'm referring to where I'm getting this basis, both in precedence, where a town was allowed to do that, and in his decision, when his explanation to us about why he felt that he could override the safety, the traffic safety issue, was that we had not, we did not clearly, we did not consider the, or recite the question of whether it clearly outweighed the need for affordable housing, for the safety issue.
Right. But.
I mean, I'm just saying, this shows that we are allowed to take.
I don't think I agree with the judge. Can I disagree with the judge? I'm not sure that I agree with his statement, because I think we took a long look, hold on, just a long look at the sightlines, the traffic. I mean, that was one of the biggest basis for us denying this, based on what we said at the time was, that did outweigh the need for affordable housing, is that the sightline issue was in the public's interest, and we, that was one of the many things that we denied. I think, if I'm reading this, and Bob, maybe you can weigh in, I don't, I don't think, given this statement, because it's traffic safety related, that we can really discuss, because that's not what we were charged with looking at, correct?
That's not the point.
Well, but.
The point is that we can consider.
But we did, I think.
I'm talking about, we can now, when we're, again, this is taken from, we can't consider.
I think we did consider that.
Well, evidently, it wasn't written into our, it wasn't written into our official motion, evidently, that's what he's citing. But I'm just saying, I'm not saying.
I don't know how it wasn't, when it was, we denied the application based on that. We said by our denial that the safety issues outweighed our need for affordable housing. That was the whole basis of our denial.
Is that the wording of the motion?
I don't recall the wording of the motion. But I think the larger point you're trying to make is, he recited that as one of the reasons why he wouldn't uphold your decision based on that. But he goes on to say, the last sentence of that paragraph says, "Moreover, the record is devoid of any evidence measuring, excuse me, in their brief and throughout trial, the commission interveners present several arguments why noncompliance with the state and local standards should be considered sufficient to meet the second prong of 8-30G. But none of these arguments shows that such compliance was necessary to protect the public interest or outweighed the need for affordable housing." Essentially, the judge did not agree that the evidence in the record that the commission relied upon to do that weighing process weighed in favor of denying, denying the application because the need, the safety hazard outweighed the need for public housing. But fast forward to these issues, I think what you're trying to say is, you can do that now on these issues.
Right. That's the only point I'm trying to make.
You're absolutely right, you can.
Okay.
And it says, and I took it from the law.
Yep. But you must first find, before you do the weighing, you must first find that noncompliance is necessary to protect the public interest, and then you weigh that noncompliance against the need for public housing.
Which is.
The agency decided whether the risk of such harm to the public interest clearly outweighs the need for the public housing is the sentence from the statute. You first have to find that there is a risk to public harm, and you have to find that there is evidence in the record of a quantifiable probability that a specific harm will result if the application is granted. Mere concerns alone are insufficient, those are the words that come out of the cases. So yes, you can do that now on these three issues, I think was the point you're trying to make. You can, but first you must.
I'm trying to make that at the last meeting. And so in number A, I tried to use the public record to quantify risk. We know that it is not theoretical that there is already harm, there is, the abaters have testified that there is harm. We have a policy of abatement that has had tremendous discussion back and forth. And by the way, I went to publicly praise Mr. Quick for his in-depth work, and my issue has nothing to do with your fine engineering, I just want to go on record, especially some of that evidence you presented last time was very informative, so I just want to say that. But what we have is an abatement of harm. And as, you know, as the months went on and the testimony piled up, for me, I saw this as a theoretical abatement. This is not, this is not certain, of course, nothing's certain in this world, but there was, it was so uncertain that we had to go and get some more measurements, that there was still some talk about if these measurements are okay, and it all comes down to, yes, it is, the abatement plan is in with established, it fits in with established engineering principles that are common, that are accepted by the state and by the town for this work. Presumably, all of the area around it was also engineered to correct standards, but it is what, in my field of engineering, we would call a fragile environment, not environment as environmental science, but a physical, a fragile system. So we have this fragile system, we have a theoretical measure of abatement, and the reason I wanted to make sure we captured everything that Mr. Shea said is that he said, he's been very careful to say that per the issues that were remanded to us, he is concerned, he is, he accepts those, that those conditions have been met. However, he did say, two meetings ago, that he was concerned with the measure of overrun, and he clarified that last time by talking about some unknowns in both the direction and velocity of the groundwater. So we have this unknown in this fragile environment, and mathematically, you say there exists a small but finite risk. I'm not quantified in anymore, any further, because then we look at the other side of the equation. If that risk, if that's harm, if it's a small but finite number, then we must, on the other side of the equation, establish N, which is need. And that's where I feel we haven't given our townsfolk their due, because in a town full of 27,000 people, no one supported this. Several people did come up quite against it vocally. And again, we felt, you know, again, as commissioners sworn to uphold 830G and all the laws of the state, all the statutes, we thought that was sort of taken out of our hands, and that was when I read this, that's when I almost fell off my chair. I thought, well, then we can consider it, we can take that into account, and I want to say that this is not some random town, this is not some random collection of 25,000 or so people. This is a town that, as recently as like two or three weeks ago, the Hartford Current ran a front-page story praising us in the article concerning affordable housing, concerning 830G, and praising us for having put aside areas for affordable housing. We as commissioners know that it's been in our plan of conservation and development long before us, and we ratified that. We as commissioners, every single time someone comes up to us with a proposal of multiple units, we always ask, and we always make it clear, that approval will be contingent upon them, including affordable housing. We've done that ourselves as a commission. We're also a town full of many, many organizations that support the underprivileged, who need affordable housing, and again, nobody stood up to say, "Yeah, just in case you guys didn't realize, here's why we need this." Not even our elected officials, who had been invited by townsfolk, came out in support of it. So I'm just saying that if you look at the equation, if we must establish that H, you know, if H is greater than N, then we have the right to say that we can deny this. And I think we can logically, by the public record, establish that. That's, I'm not going to beat it to death.
So your conclusion is that H is, or H is greater than N?
Right, and N being, well, I mean, I think I'm rounding up to give it zero. The public record shows that based on testimony that, from the townspeople who elected us.
I think the variability, the variability on the H side of the equation is probably just as great as the variability on the N side. True, we didn't have a lot of people speaking in favor.
No, we had nobody.
But that doesn't mean there is no one, okay? I believe each of these affordable homes will be sold.
Oh, I don't say that people won't buy a new home at this price range, but people who worry about affordable housing do not think that this is going to, that this constitutes affordable housing. As you said, as you said yourself, over, I've checked, over 30% of all the listings I've ever seen, the price is less than this. So if we're really allowed to consider the need of affordable housing, as I said in last meeting, yes, we all agree, we're very consistent on this point, we need affordable housing, but as proposed in this document, there has been no support.
Holly, the one thing you need to realize is that your problem with 830G and the way that affordable housing is defined through that and the way it's applied, is a matter that has to be taken up by the state legislature, and I am as unhappy with that as you are. I think it's all wrong, but that's something that we need to do as citizens through the legislature and get it changed, and have the numbers be more realistic for normal people. I get that. So sometimes when we do affordable housing here, I agree with you that it doesn't seem all that affordable.
Well, I'm not stating my personal view of the law. I'm stating what the public record shows. The public record shows, well, precedent shows, we are allowed to consider that. We are allowed to consider the need of our town for this law, so that there is a precedence that, I have to put my glasses on, but it's right there in the number N-A. So, yes, I mean, and up until that point, again, you guys, up until I read this, and I read it many times, I thought, as you did, I thought we had to be silent on that matter, but.
I never, I never felt that. I always knew that that was one of the angles that we could have used, and.
Well, it's not an angle, I'm talking about the public record and the public testimony.
Right, I don't read it the same way.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
I would like to understand, just one, I'd like to ask one question. How do you, the public record shows, nobody stood in favor, many people were against.
The applicant was in favor, right?
Okay, the applicant, of course, is presumed, and you did a good job too, by the way, tireless. I'm just saying, I don't see the basis for saying that the public record shows that there was support of a need for it. I've stated my, and I thank you, fellow commissioners, for respectfully listening to my arguments.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you on that, there wasn't, no one came out in support. Again, I, what I struggle with is looking at the record and what the judge charged us with, and I unfortunately don't think it affords us to say the need outweighed, do you know, I mean, unfortunately, I think they did everything to, to make this work, and, you know.
You think they need to testify.
I don't think there's enough evidence, right, in clear and convincing, or beyond a reasonable balance, however you want to look at it, I don't think there's enough to say there might be a groundwater issue, or there might be in a hundred years. I, it's not an, by the way, I'm interpreting the, what our charges in the law, I don't think it, it's enough to tip the scales, is what I'm saying. I think, I think we had enough in our original to tip the scales, and we said clearly what those 10 points were, but I don't think we have the evidence to overturn, and I get what you're saying, and I agree, there wasn't a citizen that came forward in support, but I agree with Bill, it doesn't mean there wasn't somebody out there that's, we didn't hear it, but that's what I'm struggling with, is just trying to find. I just don't think the evidence is, as Bob had read to us, the way in which it was.
Quantifiable probability that specific harm will result if the application is granted.
Yeah, I think that standard is high, and I don't think, unfortunately, this is just my opinion, I really understand what you're saying, I don't think it rises to that legal level.
Okay, so I just want to say, if, if the public record shows what the town showed up to support, yea or nay, for the, for this application, to say there might be someone out there who didn't show up, is like saying, oh, there's probably some engineer that had a conflicting view that didn't show up. Again, we're going down to the public record, and I just say that the existence of.
Let me make a comment. Those people that spoke, they're in the public hearings, okay, who, let's say, all of them expressed, I don't know, dislike or whatever, but none of them cited any, you know, harm versus the need. No one said, you know, groundwater's going to put 50,000 gallons in my driveway, but, you know, that's balanced off by allowing six families to live in this, in this development.
Well, not allowing, anyone's allowed to buy in there.
No, no, you have to meet certain restrictions. So I think your point is well-made, okay? I thought that your memorandum was very cogent, okay, and you've explained yourself very well.
And if I can say, I really do think, or certainly I weighed what the neighbor said about certain, there was a gentleman who said he was afraid of runoff going into his yard, there was another one with the mosquitoes, the runoff, those were all sightline, all of those comments by the neighbors and the record, I know, went into my decision, so I weighed what those neighbors said at that time.
And we are still allowed to do that. The part I have in italics is the part of the law that says how we respond to a judge's appeal.
Let me suggest that we vote on the motion, okay? If the motion is unsuccessful, then you can work with whomever to come up with a new motion, okay? So the discussion is closed. All in favor of the motion to grant the approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Very good. Next, under new business, we are in receipt of a new application. That's application number 19-02 of Dorset Crossing LLC owner, attorney Tom Fahey, Fahey and Landelina agent, for the revision to the layout of the temporary cul-de-sac and easement resulting in the re-subdivision of the properties located at 115 Casta Bridge Crossing, assessors map H04, block 403, lot 13A through G, or A-G. And 130 Casta Bridge Crossing, assessors map H04.
And one thirty Casta Bridge Crossing assessors map H zero four, block four oh three, lot thirteen A dash D. Uh, zone PAD. So we're in receipt of this tonight. Uh, this requires a public hearing. Uh, this public hearing's al, already been scheduled for our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is on July ninth, twenty nineteen.
That's correct. Mr. Chairman, just to give a quick, uh, brief description to the commission, you may recall, you approved that, you actually approved this re-subdivision back in January two thousand and seventeen. The applicant failed to file the MyLars within ninety days of the decision, so therefore that's why they're back, just to, uh, certify, re-certify, validate the approval. Sorry.
Are they making any changes?
No changes.
A little sloppy on there. Okay, thank you, Mike. Um, any referrals that have come in since the agenda was made? No?
Nothing.
Any general commission business such as correspondence?
Just one, one of correspondence. I'll, we'll have it uploaded to your packet. We received notification and, uh, last Monday from FEMA regarding, uh, the flood insurance rate maps update. The Farmington River and Hop Brook have been selected as, uh, water courses that will receive an updated detailed engineered study. Um, we have thirty days to appeal that decision or to ask if there's other water courses that we won't, we would like a detailed study conducted. Um, myself and, uh, Jeff Shea have been looking at this. For the most part, they're using current engineering practices. It's just a matter if we want to add another, uh, water course to their scope of work. So.
Interesting.
But I'll upload that document along with the map to your, uh, to the packet. So. That's it.
Okay, I look forward to seeing it. Okay, uh, any commissioners, any other comments, questions? Everyone, uh, everyone going to be here on the ninth of July?
I will not be.
Okay, Craig will not be here. Good for you.
I'm sorry, hang on a second.
That's the ninth of July. Jeez, I might, I should check and see if I'm going to be here. Yeah, let me just double check here. Yep, I'm good.
Yeah, I think I'm, I think I am actually in.
Okay. Good enough. All right, thank you, everyone. Um, that concludes our agenda. Does someone like to make a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good night.